We've called a meeting to order. Could we please join me in a moment of prayer? Lord, yes, we ask you to watch over us today and guide us in our decisions for Warren County. We also ask that you watch over our troops that are overseas, bring them home safely to their families. We ask these and many other blessings in your name. Before we get started too, I'd like to ask everyone to turn their cell phones off on vibration, so we won't be interrupted by them. At 9:00 a.m., we're scheduled to have a public hearing on the transfer of unused value project funds. Have we got a notice of publication? Okay. And do we have a sheet going around for sign in?
Is it just out here?
Okay. Over to you.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'd love everybody here to the public hearing. The county supplemental, community development block grant, gives them programming for value improvements and now any road side repair and drainage project. I have Jackie Kay here, who is the administrator of the project, and she will tell the board in public about this project.
Good morning, Dave.
Good morning. All right. Warren County received a $3.90 CDG grant. To make any difference was to certify use throughout the county after our county attorney. The project was targeted in five phases. The first two phases were completed relatively easy with participation of other residents and those residents donating easements to their property. Several residents of phases three, four, and five areas were not so willing or not willing at all to donate easements and many even more than monetary compensation for that. The board supervisors showed us not to acquire any easements, which in turn led to failure of those phases. The county made a request with statements to the municipal authority to use remaining funds to make drainage improvements, repair major sites, and put in place erosion control measures along the Haney Road, which we all know is a one-way road into the heart of the project. It's planned severe erosion control measures into effect that will give the major industries at the core, Vic's burn, City Vic's burn, water treatment plant, some stability. It is the only access from in and out of the heart of the project. If this problem is not undertaken immediately and I can undermine the other roadway curves, it will cause a major economic impact to the county and it will also cause health and safety hazards to the city's water plant being located on Haney Road. So, we have a public meeting here. Do want to comment that we do have a deadline to have the project finished by December 31st of 2014, that deadline, because that project has been set by municipal development authority. And again, the importance and priority of the section where this is concerned and the residents getting the opportunity for training, hiring, and contractual preference on this project has been very, very important. Any questions about that? No?
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Do we have any comments from the audience or anybody else that wants to make a comment? If not, we have a motion to propose a public hearing. Some of...
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Also in conjunction with this, Brian, if you wanted to request...
We would like to request in conjunction with this, some of the time limits and the deadlines that have been drawn to the county to this project completed, once there's an approval received from NDA, we'd like the board's approval to execute a contract and authorize the board president to sign it to participate in this work. So, in typical terms, 15% is included as along with geotechnical testing and I've got the end kilometers to determine the extent to length of the slot.
Some of...
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Teller.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. We've had out this meeting before you. Here on behalf of International Paper Company, we've had substantial additions and changes to the plant over the period of 2013, and we have filed on their behalf an application for approval. And here with me on behalf of the company, I have the mail manager, the secretary of mail manager, Justice Todd Hoffman, from Memphis, manager of the commoners, Henry Person is the property manager for the tax living little company. And Caleb Coe is a financial analyst from Memphis as well, and then Jackie Kay, who is now in control of International Paper Company. During the year 2013, the company made substantial additions, as I mentioned, for a total amount of $26,113,871.59. That's $26,113,871.59. And additions and changes to the plant, which is what helped us keep going, provided the employment of the citizens that have been in Vic's burn. Most of you probably know, was back in the mid-1960s, the management of Vic's burn. And one of the reasons that Vic's burned was the foresight of the board supervisors at that time in granting to them a tax exemption for their construction of the whole plant. And they have, over the years, appreciated and have the privilege of obtaining tax exemptions for the major changes that they have made. And as you all know, without them, they were making those changes, they can't stay in competition with the rest of the world market, whether it are the products which they serve. And this board has always been my experience, extremely understanding and appreciative of the fact that it provides employment for the citizens and taxes for which we, as the rest of the community, are able to appreciate and get the benefit of over the years, so that the exemptions that are granted to the companies like International Paper Company actually afford benefits to the rest of the community. And by virtue of the fact that they're able to be here, make the employment, pay the taxes that they did pay. All of you probably are also aware of many, many personnel from International Paper Company that have, over the years, provided community service through the churches, through the family commercial leadership. International Paper has always been a top contributor, wasn't the United Way. They have special programs, they pay money to the student system, improve our public student system. So, International Paper Company, they have substantial contributing corporate assistance. And they have actually requested the exemption that they have asked for in the land. Over this last year, because of the making of the improvements, they are able to continue to employ approximately 300 personnel. And they have a payroll annually in excess of $28 million. So, I'll tell you what they're doing and how much money, any money back to us. So, I would think, if you have any questions with people that we got from our main folks from here in Vic's burn and even Memphis, I feel like we can answer anything that you might have. I might ask you to... What we have filed, Ms. Harley, I ask that you accept the application, the three copies, and if you accept that, and then also, we would ask that you approve the order. Once you're satisfied with any questions that you may have.
I think we need a motion to do that, and also the... What I need to sign, I think...
Yes, you do.
Or is it stamped there?
Let me interrupt you, Dave. If you will make a motion to accept the...
Just to see, that's all we need.
And then a second motion to approve the preliminary order and authorize the board to sign.
Just like on the... Some of it. Okay. Okay, we've got a motion to accept the application and a second?
Second.
Question. Look, expansion, will there be an additional job added?
No, there wouldn't be additional jobs added. We're currently employed at the company about 200 people. The issue of expansions, I was just getting prepared in the search, and we're able to do some of the things that we're doing to keep a strong unit here, have people employed, the notice.
You mentioned to me earlier, which I thought was very impressive, and you were just giving me a number. I think that probably the number is pretty close, I'm not sure accurate, but you were telling me that people that working at your company from Warren County is about what percentage?
I believe it's about 85% in Warren County. There's some folks from Ashes and some folks from the Jackson County area. Pretty much a few from the West Side of Jackson, but I would say about 80% of those are Warren County residents.
Thank you.
And actually, the contract was also not able to share with you now, or the employees, but they had a 2013...
Yes, 2013, during our shutdown, we employed about 800 contractors for our 36-day outage. Had a long shutdown, with us in very, very intense work, and we brought about 100 people to do that area for the duration of that 36-day outage. For example, this year, we have another 14-day outage, and about 1,100 folks for a 14-day outage, so... These shutdowns that we have are very, very intense from our folks in both local areas and outside of town, and obviously, it's going to have a lot of time and money to get the local hotels and restaurants, etc. So, we're happy to do that and continue to do that year in and out of our shutdowns.
And just for the audience, also, I don't know, not off the cuff, how much International Paper pays in having to go on taxes, but it is a lot that they pay that won't be exempted on this. This is just a partial exemption on the expansion. So, it's... And hopefully, we won't get it mixed up with any of the talk we've had on tax abatements. That's completely different from these exemptions for industries. These are the people that are providing jobs for our community and making everything work and bringing the money in. It's not... It's completely different from retail sales. We appreciate what y'all do.
Was the most of this an expansion or kind of general maintenance?
We did some work to improve efficiencies. Expansion wise, not making any more product, we said, but we did make some quality improvements and also extra energy efficiency improvements.
I was about to mention also as well, is... Let's tell you, you mentioned this, but I think that IP has been a great community partner in the community. There's a lot of things that they do, you mentioned the schools and United Way, and there's a lot of other organization agents that do participate or help in. So, I think that y'all are doing a good job in the community, at least presently.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate you, sir.
Any other question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Richard.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And I'll send it... If you want to wait until it comes back from the department, I'll send it out right after we get that notice up.
Except for the letter. It's done.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
We have another similar situation with Cameron, re-escalations in the board right now. Now, you have already heard from Cameron. If you recall, they were here May 9th as a group and presented their application that time, and we already received their application and answered the questions. What we were waiting on was a site visit by the tax extension office. And that has been completed, to my knowledge, to Cameron this past week. So, at the request of Cameron, I am simply presenting the preliminary order to you on your application consideration in the random bounty section.
We need... Have we got something from the back?
You also had a position statement from International Paper, and it stands as right, but what we do have is the position statement signed by John.
We include that in our stand-up information. But they okay with everything that we...
According to their position statement, yes. I'd ask them to be, you know, if they were going to be here this morning, and they will be here shortly.
I can back that.
That's true. That would be...
Okay, and they're okay with it?
Yes, I have that decided, my friend. But Marcy, someone has been on the way up. I think it's, okay, she has some questions.
If y'all can get the statement. If we got something in writing there, that's fine with me. Whatever y'all want to do, I'm ready to go. What's the motion to the board?
Do we have a dollar now?
Let's see. The personal property total as a completion date at $2,318,305. That's the exemption total value as a completion date.
That's personal property?
Yes.
Okay.
They have down here, the number of new jobs is 100, and the estimated annual payroll of 40,000, $383,600. Would you like to go down here on the... I mean, if you want to go over there.
I forget all that information. Unless it's specific questions, I might add, and then move on.
And then, Mr. Marcy, the review on the position statement is exactly the same value that Cameron has put in there, and that Cameron has put into the preliminary order.
I'll make a motion if we accept this order.
It's a motion to accept the preliminary order. Cameron makes decisions, we're running an exemption to Cameron on taxes. And authorized...
Yes, authorized, should be able to sign it.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'll make the sign right here, I guess. This is my paper.
Pretty different places here.
Our next item, gentlemen, is I'm asking that you accept... This is the public official bond for the Department of Warren County Circuit Court, Gray Palace, and I'm asking you to approve the sufficiency of bond. As all you're approving is a bond for $100,000, started as, effective as dated, he took office, and will go to the end of this year, December 31st, 2014. And just furthering these provisions.
Who is it with?
It is with Travers. This is our first line coming from Travers.
I'm beginning to wonder if we are wasting our money buying bonds, just to save, or we might need to get a legislator to knock that down, because it doesn't seem like it does any good when you have somebody that does something wrong to collect that one like you're supposed to.
Are you talking about from past experience, people?
Oh, that's my present experience that we got right now. Haven't seen any money from the insurance company, not a dime, yet. So, what's we should to the board?
I make a motion that we accept this bond.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Teller.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
We have another similar situation with Cameron, re-escalations in the board right now. Now, you have already heard from Cameron. If you recall, they were here May 9th as a group and presented their application that time, and we already received their application and answered the questions. What we were waiting on was a site visit by the tax extension office. And that has been completed, to my knowledge, to Cameron this past week. So, at the request of Cameron, I am simply presenting the preliminary order to you on your application consideration in the random bounty section.
We need... Have we got something from the back?
You do. And in the morning, also had a position statement from International Paper, and it stands as right, but what we do have is the position statement signed by John.
We include that in our stand-up information. But they okay with everything that we...
According to their position statement, yes. I'd ask them to be, you know, if they were going to be here this morning, and they will be here shortly.
I can back that.
That's true. That's true. That would be...
Okay, and they're okay with it?
Yes, I have that decided, my friend. But Marcy, someone has been on the way up. I think it's, okay, she has some questions.
If y'all can get the statement. If we got something in writing there, that's fine with me. Whatever y'all want to do, I'm ready to go. What's the motion to the board?
Do we have a dollar now?
Let's see. The personal property total as a completion date at $2,318,305. That's the exemption total value as a completion date.
That's personal property?
Yes.
Okay.
They have down here, the number of new jobs is 100, and the estimated annual payroll of 40,000, $383,600. Would you like to go down here on the... I mean, if you want to go over there.
What's the issue with that? Forget all that information. Unless it's specific questions, I might add, and then move on.
And then, Mr. Marcy, the review on the position statement is exactly the same value that Cameron has put in there, and that Cameron has put into the preliminary order.
I'll make a motion if we accept this order.
It's a motion to accept the preliminary order. Cameron makes decisions, we're running an exemption to Cameron on taxes. And authorized...
Yes, authorized, should be able to sign it.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Our next item, gentlemen, is I'm asking that you accept... This is the public official bond for the Department of Warren County Circuit Court, Gray Palace, and I'm asking you to approve the sufficiency of bond. As all you're approving is a bond for $100,000, started as, effective as dated, he took office, and will go to the end of this year, December 31st, 2014. And just furthering these provisions.
Who is it with?
It is with Travers. This is our first line coming from Travers.
I'm beginning to wonder if we are wasting our money buying bonds, just to save, or we might need to get a legislator to knock that down, because it doesn't seem like it does any good when you have somebody that does something wrong to collect that one like you're supposed to.
Are you talking about from past experience, people?
Oh, that's my present experience that we got right now. Haven't seen any money from the insurance company, not a dime, yet. So, what's we should to the board?
I make a motion that we accept this bond.
Got a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions?
Oh, I think it doesn't make any whole lot of difference, but you say to the end of the term or in this special election.
Right, and if they took it to the end of the year, and, but of course, you can cancel it and up in the reverse if it was not, they have to, yes, so this is just to, in case you lost, if you told it to the end and then...
We just don't want to give the cloud the election process in it by saying it's going to the end of the term, because it doesn't go to the end of the year.
Right.
Whatever the election process takes place.
That's right, actually, it goes until the election, and whoever's elected at that point in time, it's really not the end of the year, but...
Right, but that is what they have put in there, just in, you know, just in case, so if you are forced to cancel it, it's not, it's not just...
Do we just need to have specific language to the end of this special election?
You could go there in your motion.
I don't see a problem with it running to the end of the year.
Well, in all of our bonds, if someone was to vacate the office earlier than the term of bond, it's simply a call and cancel the remaining portion of bond.
Yeah.
Yes.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
You gentlemen, I have an issue with... You gentlemen, I have a question. Um, it was mentioned earlier about not, not being able to collect on past bonds. What we at with that, do anybody know? Have we more collecting?
Yeah. Past bonds.
Well, where are you at? We're still in court on that, you know, the trial of the civil matter, which is what you're addressing or questioning, is scheduled to reconvene October, the 11th, is what it is.
In the meeting last week, they told us definitely that it was the state's job to make sure that all the abundant money was collected by that department.
Well, I think that's what, that's...
That they're supposed to do all the follow-up, and they're supposed to proceed, but all the proceeds is necessary to collect that money.
Well, the only way you can proceed with collecting it is through this long, long loop across this, and Western Insurty, of course, is denying liability, so they are a defendant in this suit as well.
And Western Insure, the, also insures a lot of the public officials. Yes, yeah. But they're... They do. They're siding with someone that has, yeah, got allegations against them, in both civil and criminal, and doesn't currently hold office because of, of living in another county. And they won't pay. And the fact that not, just not paying, they're actually going over on the other side and spending money to defend her, basically, is what it looked like to me.
It appears to be, but really not.
Yeah.
If you look at that, if you look at that bond, it has a whole different look. It calls for a witness, but that was all I signed a witness because I happened to be the witness, and I have to go outside, but it does not call for a sale of a change of clerk or sale of the board supervisors, only the sale of the insurance company came over the bond. So, this one's a lot more clear, but you're not really guaranteeing anything on behalf of that official, that is really between the official and the...
Guarding company.
It's a little bit clearer to read, you know.
Okay.
I just have one matter for you, in regards to interlocal agreement between Warren County and the City of Vic's burn concerning the 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, that being a JAG grant, where the Secretary of State's Office has recorded that interlocal agreement, and I would ask you to accept that remanaging process.
Some of them. Second.
Got a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And actually, the contract was also not able to share with you now, or the employees, but they had a 2013...
Yes, 2013, during our shutdown, we employed about 800 contractors for our 36-day outage. Had a long shutdown, with us in very, very intense work, and we brought about 100 people to do that area for the duration of that 36-day outage. For example, this year, we have another 14-day outage, and about 1,100 folks for a 14-day Since we got a bit downtime, I mentioned earlier to Brian, I just want to kind of get a board update on where we at with Quinosa Lane for getting meetings together or assessment.
After the terms researched, and May and March talked about that earlier, she kind of provided the names and ownerships that she did title searches on behind that, were part of working on providing together the estimate to make repairs to the road to be included in that special assessment. Along with that, can the determination, courthouse researchers, or tracking these technical teams, that's, they are aware of things that can be charged by the firm, which will be a large consideration in this matter. We're working towards that, but then next week, we'll have to get that for you and say, you know, meeting the other residents so that you can go over with them and have information up to the board.
Thank you. Brian, where are we staying with our contractors working on the paving?
The paving, we've had the reconstruction conference with AVAC, they're noticed to receive, will be Monday, so hopefully, you know, I don't know before July, it'll actually come into town, it'll start Monday, and apparently, getting, you know, destroying any of the paper, get that, so we, you know, follow right by mine with the paving contract.
When will we be expecting to bid it out?
I won't say until August, the second meeting in July, maybe the first meeting, I was about giving up the hell of it in my record to see what, and back it up, if you got certain amount, I'm gonna have to run after it, second after that.
You remember how many days it got on the paving contract?
I won't say it's nine days. It's calendar days, and that's, I'll say, Joe.
Okay.
Okay, hopefully it'll start by last minute, Monday, they didn't notice particularly Monday.
Thank you.
This is long day, I haven't been on, I got William's voice name, it's good.
Want to just, we have to do a court date.
If you don't mind.
All right.
Well, maybe, hopefully, if you will, I mean, he's supposed to be.
We'll just do 10 o'clock, give him an opportunity. Keep him right, he's still on clock.
And that's my fault, I mean, typically, we are about a quarter till 10:00, you know, or 10 o'clock.
If you want to come from Butler Snow. I'd rather wait on him, than him wait on us, of course. Say quarter two.
I'll make a motion that we recess to 9:45.
Second. Got a motion in a second, any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, care, we're in recess till 9:45. We'll call a meeting back to order. Marcy?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lawdell, Ms. Hardy, I believe, had one quick matter she wanted to address the board on.
Okay.
Let this important thing get by us. Let's see if we can take that up today. What we have here is that, following the lead of the state from Delbert Housman's office, the state offices will be closed on Friday, July 4th, in observance of Independence Day, and under the code of section 337, I'm asking that the county follow suit in declaring 4th of July as a legal holiday in the state of Mississippi, so that Warren County may go along with this as well.
Don't move.
Second. Got a motion in a second, any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, care.
Okay.
Kevin, they want to debate right now, and it's a whole day, but they're all, they just hate, or they.
It just works. We're on a full day.
Gentlemen, if it pleases the board, I would ask you to consider going into executive session to discuss the pending Ameristar versus Warren County matter.
Make a motion that we consider going into the executive session to consult discussion of legal with Ameristar.
Second. Got a motion in a second, any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, care.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the legal matter with Ameristar, with the chance to clerk, administrator, the tax process's office, and other attorneys that's involved in the office, now attorney.
Thank you.
Second. Got a motion in a second, any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, care. We're in now an executive session. Okay, we're, we're back in session, no action was taken in executive session. What's the wish to the board, y'all ready to recess?
Make a motion to recess to June 30th, 9:00.
Make a motion to 9:00. Okay. Second. Motion in a second, any question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, care. We're in recess.